2021 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Tommy Gartrill will lead our invocation. Please rise.
Madam Chair, thank you for this opportunity to come together and conduct the business of the county in peace and fellowship. Thank you for this wonderful day for parents, students, teachers, staff, citizens, Picketts County.
All right, Mr. Steve Smith will lead our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Smith and Mr. Green. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The agenda has been approved. The next item on our agenda is recognitions by Ms. Destiny Shope.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Young, family and friends of our retirees, and other guests. Retirement is a tremendous milestone achieved by those who are willing to dedicate themselves to a particular career for a significant amount of time. This evening, I am honored to celebrate with you as we recognize several individuals who have made a commitment. We will be recognizing our system retirees for last year as well as for the current year. Collectively, I estimate that they have given over 500 years of their lives to serving children in education, and many of those years were given to the children right here in our community. Let's give them all a round of applause for achieving this milestone. Mr. Young, if you'll come down front, when I call your name, if you will come up to the front, and we will present you with a token of our appreciation. We're proud to present each of you in attendance with a customized maple cutting board, and it reads, "Thank you for your service to Pickett County School District. Live well, laugh often, and love retirement." So when I call your name, if you will come up. Mr. Young will give you your gift. Our 2019-20 retirees are Susan Anderson, Hannah Baker, Abby Bates, Sharon Flowers, Gala Foster, Penny Fowler, Alan Jinn, Lydia Meadows, and Gala Young.
Yeah, we're gonna bring you guys up for a picture in just a second.
This is so sweet, I'm gonna wanna cry.
Y'all need to stay up here.
Yeah, if you guys would bring around, we want to get some pictures with the board there.
Circle.
It's good. Do we need to ring them?
Yeah, maybe.
Squishy.
That's us, we're off standing behind you.
Thank you, congratulations. We will now recognize our 2020-2021 retirees, and I'll be honest, many of them are already on vacation. So we will ask those that are here, or the one that is here, to come forward. Ms. Lisa Barnett, Kristi Brooks, Robbie Cheatham, Wanda Ferris, Darlene Herndon, Jill Libertor, Geraldine Parker, Regina Payne, Judy Rangel, Carol Smith, Michelle Stanglone, Julie Warner, Linda Wyman, and Nancy Wilson. So congratulations. Thank you, Seems, inadequate for the many hours, days, and years you have dedicated to changing the lives of children in Pickett County, but know that you are appreciated, and we are honored to be able to recognize each of you this evening. Thank you. The Georgia Education Workers Compensation Trust is a not-for-profit insurance program owned by its participating members. Each year during their annual shareholders' meeting, GEWCT recognizes its members who have maintained a 25% or lower loss ratio for the previous year. Achieving this loss level requires each participating member agency to take a proactive stance on safety training. It takes a commitment from every employee to do everything in their power to work safely. Part of this training includes the ability to recognize a hazard before it becomes an accident. In Pickett County, Director of Personnel, Chris Parker, has been instrumental in designing and implementing safety protocols and procedures throughout the district. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Parker to come forward to receive this Award of Excellence for Dedication to Safety presented on behalf of the Georgia Education Workers Compensation Trust. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
You gotta get your picture.
Oh, I gotta take a picture too? This is not really for me, you know, this is everybody.
It is everybody.
Well, everybody's not here, so you wanna get your picture.
All right, the next item on the list is Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first report will be our financial update, and tonight for Ms. Smith, we have Ms. Probst.
Thank you, Mr. Young. First up, we have our general fund summary. And so FY21 general fund revenue collected through May 2021 is at 91.97%, and expenditures are at 75.65% of the amended budget. And then for our consolidation of funds, we are at, these reflect our current expenditures and transfers to date. Part of this will be amended in the budget as we adjusted the way that we do our transfers per state regulations. And then, I apologize. Next is our capital projects and SPOS summary. And our SPOS revenue for May 2021 was $607,210.10. That brings our 12-month average to $566,937.48. Our interest earned was at $2,981.27. Expenditures totaled $132,086.28, and the month-end SPOS balance was $9,235,326.24. And then lastly, the school system has no debt to report.
I knew this was your first time, so I prepared a packet of questions.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was hoping for.
Come on, Tucker.
I couldn't help it.
Thank you, Madam. Our next presentation will be from our Chief of Operations, who's also gonna talk a little bit about instruction. Mr. Gillen.
Tonight, as we're in the process this summer of doing a lot of work, where we're painting, repairing, something in every building, moving a lot of furniture and people around because it seems like these principals, my best friends, like to move their staff around every summer, but it's all right, we'll get it done. We have, transportation this time of year is a lot busier than you think for the office staff because we're moving all the kids up a grade, getting them on the right buses, correct buses. We try to maximize our bus loads as best as we can, so there's a lot of time and effort put into getting the kids on the right buses and in the right areas. We have a conference coming up in the next couple of weeks in transportation, and a lot of the DOE people will be there, and we'll be getting a lot of new updates and laws and things that'll be going on this year and some training that we need. School nutrition, Beth has signed us up. She did some research, she feels like this is best. She signed us up to do the seamless school summer. Every kid in the system will eat breakfast and lunch free next year by doing this. We will not do free and reduce applications because of this, and it's a federal requirement that we can't if we give them the seamless summer, so everybody's gonna eat free for another year. That's great. I got a couple of things coming up later in the budget for y'all to take action on. Two GMPs, and a GMP is a guaranteed maximum price from the contractors. Tate Elementary, I don't know if you remember, in December, we had a problem with some plaster ceilings falling, and we got a call saying the ceiling looks, the drop ceiling looked funny. Checked it out, and actually, the plaster above the drop ceiling was detaching from the roof and falling down. So we fixed that area this, in December. We did an inspection, had some engineers come out, and they recommended we do the entire second floor. So we're in the process of getting that stuff started and going on, but that price to do that is a guaranteed maximum price, $220,373. That's cheap compared to one incident with a plaster ceiling falling. This is old-style plaster, it's very heavy, it could hurt somebody. The junior high act facility's coming up. We are actually in the process of breaking ground and working on it. This price to do this is $2348,363. We have gone out and looked at the road going in and made some adjustments, and I think I can save us a lot of money by changing the way we're routing the road. It looks anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000 we can save doing that. But we need to pass this now, they'll give us the savings in the end, I promise, they always do. This also includes, and I didn't, I don't know if I've even been clear with this to y'all before, it includes $150,000 for new bleachers in the gymnasium. These bleachers were 26-years-old, 28-years-old, something like that, and they're failing. I mean, I lay under them twice a year and hold the wires together to get them out so they can clean them and work on them, so I physically have to get in and do it because some of my guys have never worked on them and don't know how, and I had to figure out how to make them work one time.
So 32-years-old.
32-years-old, they're old, so it's time, they're dangerous. They weren't designed right, that first step coming down, I don't know if y'all remember, it was about four inches taller than the rest of the steps, very dangerous. Had no handrails down the rails, it's just old-style, didn't have them back then. So that's in there, which I'm proud to get done because I really think that for safety purposes and for a gym that nice, it needed to be done, especially after remodeling last summer. So those are two big items coming up, and I just wanted to talk them down a little bit before y'all got to them.
I know we're overhauling the communication system and the phones, technology, all the intercom system, how's that coming?
It's going good, isn't it, Patrick? The phones are basically done, aren't they? Phones are basically done. Audio enhancement's been working a couple of weeks now, they got their stuff in, just started a couple of weeks, so doing the intercoms and the speakers and all that stuff, so we should be in good shape on that. Anything to say? Please.
ETC, ETC is distributing phones. They've been doing it for about three months now. I know that Tate has theirs, Hill City has theirs, Central Office has theirs, they're at Harmony right now. The big, the big elephant in the room is, you know, PHS. So that's, that's a massive project in and of itself. The, the problem is if we get the phones out, then we've gotta make sure that the teachers can use them when they come back, so it's, and we're dealing with floors being waxed and audio enhancement going into classrooms and doing the intercom systems and stuff like that. Right now, they're at Harmony, they're, they're moving right along, they've been there for about three days now, they're wrapping up Harmony, and they'll move to Hill City next. So again, the big one is PHS, the big one. But they should have all the kinks worked out before they hit a school that size, and that's why they're starting at the smaller ones. So we are on track for having everything in place before the start of school. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, thank you, Stacy. Madam Chair, that concludes my reports.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young. The next item on the agenda is the approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports Ms. Probst presented?
Some move. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next item is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve Personnel Action Report as presented? Okay, Mr. Holland makes that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Hang five oh. The PAR is approved as presented. The next item on the list is the approval of the FY21 budget amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Probst, if you could come up and speak to the board on that.
So on the board is our summary, we have four different classifications of budget amendments that we're requesting. The first one is for general fund, and you will see that there are no changes in the overall budget, nothing in bold or italics. The requested changes are just cleanup entries at the end of the year, we're moving things from objects, they are not moving functions or fund, it's not changing overall dollar amounts. And then the next section is for Fund 150, again, this one has, it's still on the summary page, sorry, thank you. There are no changes in the overall budget for this either, this is what I mentioned before, where it's, we've had an adjustment in how we're recording our transfers per the state guidelines. And then the next one is for capital projects, which is on here, and you will see in bold and italics the changes to this one. There was an increase in the SPOS budget, and that's to add additional expenses that have been requested and previously approved, and those are listed on the summary page. And then the last one is special revenue, and this was the change to the CARES grant funding to reflect only FY21. Though the grant is very large, we have been advised by the state that you should only budget what we intend to spend in the current fiscal year, so we have reduced that budget to what we anticipate spending. And that concludes the budget amendments.
Thank you, Madam.
Do I have a motion to approve FY21 budget amendment as presented?
Some move.
Okay, Tommy?
I'll say it.
Okay, Tucker? Is there any further discussion? Not gonna give her a hard time? All right, all in favor? Five oh, you got it obviously, yeah. We're really quite, quite nice. All right, five oh, thank you so much for your help, Ms. Probst. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the spending resolution. Would you like to explain that to us, please?
Yes, ma'am, this is where we are requesting the approval to spend money in beginning July 1, 2021, in the event that the FY22 budget is not approved and finalized prior. It'll be 1/12th of the prior year's total budget that can be expended beginning on July 1.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. You got ahead of me. All right, Mr. Green?
I'm trying to help you set a record on time.
It's a long agenda, we're not gonna meet your records. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right, thank you so much for your help.
Thank you, Madam.
We have a request to approve a memorandum of understanding with Chattahoochee Technical College. Mr. Young, would you give us a brief description of what this memorandum is?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am excited to bring this MOU to the board this evening and ask for your approval of it. It is an MOU between Chattahoochee Tech and the district whereby we will be allowing Chattahoochee Tech to use our culinary arts facilities, and in exchange for that, our students will gain access to some additional pathways and end-of-pathway completions in prep cook technical certification and catering assistant technical certification. So it's a win-win for the community, it's a win for our students, win for Chet Tech, and I am excited to bring that to the board this evening and ask for the board's approval of this MOU.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the MOU with Chattahoochee Technical College as presented?
I'll give the motion.
All right.
I'll say it.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say I was really excited to see this on here, we started talking and working on this last year, so I'm glad to see this come together. I think, I could be wrong, but I think Tony and Daniel Bell and Chris Wallace really kinda worked closely with Chet Tech, so appreciate that and glad that came together. It is a good thing.
All right, all in favor? Five oh. All right, the next item is the approval of the MOU with the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension. Mr. Young, do you have some information on this MOU for us?
I do, Madam Chair, we're on a roll this evening. This is another MOU that I'm excited to bring to the board. First of all, I'd like to send a shout-out to Rick Jasper for his work in this area over so many years and his help in getting us to the point where we have the current agreement, and so I'm excited to ask the board for its approval. I believe Mr. Clark McAllister is here with us this evening. Mr. McAllister, if you would come, come forward if you don't mind, he has come, he is the extension agent for Dawson and Lumpkin, and he has often come to the board and talked to you about this MOU and how it's gonna work, and I truly am glad to see it back. Thank you for coming over, Mr. McAllister.
Absolutely, thank you for having me. So this MOU between the Board of Education and the, and the Extension Office of the University of Georgia, so our local office here in Pickett County, is really just the, like other MOUs you have, is just our sort of base operating agreement, and just, you know, lays out what both parties would like to do. It's, this is typical of what we have with every funding, you know, local funding agency we have. What I'm also asking for as well is, we've, we've got an annual contract that we signed, and you guys helped fund a county extension agent, which we haven't had someone in that position for the last year, the previous agent, Christina Garner, she actually resigned and went to another county March of last year, so you can imagine with the timing, there was, there were some hiring freezes on UGA Extension's side. They're just now getting around where on Extension's side, we can rehire. So what we do when, when Extension asks to rehire an agent, come to the funding agencies or the local boards and say, would you please fill out this, what we call salary verification. And it's not a contract in and of itself, all that says is, hey, we, we want to hire the, hire the agent. What I'm also asking for is the annual contract that we come and ask for every year, and that's, that has funds for the extension agent, which, you know, that hadn't really had been paid for the last year because we hadn't had anyone there. It also has a little bit of funding for what we call the 4H CIPA, the County Extension Program Assistant. And so both the extension agent, we hopefully get that hired relatively soon, and the program assistant, both to do out-of-school and in-school club meetings. And, yeah, that's kinda just based on where, where the schools let them in, usually a fifth grade and then junior high, or middle schools, high schools, things like that. So, you know, we, it's been a long time since you had an agent here, again, with that turnover, it's been a full year. I've just been stepping in as sort of head of the office, just because I was, honestly, just because I was closest to this location, but we're really excited to hopefully get somebody hired back and get you guys someone full-time and get the, the level of service back up to where it needs to be.
All right, thank you. Anybody got any questions for Mr. McAllister?
No questions, I'm just very excited to have someone in this spot again. I think it's a fantastic program for our young people.
Yeah, we're excited to, thank you, thank you for having us and for, for funding what you need.
Well, I'm just tickled to have an agent back, and somebody who grew up on a farm, has a farm now, here I work with agents all the way back from the days of Rick Cunningham, the seventies for me, it's here.
Yeah, I will be relieved too, I, being more of an agriculture agent than a 4H agent myself, I, you know, filling a lot of the calls, so I try to do what I can from a distance for your agricultural producers here and just people with, you know, landscape grass problems and things like that, so it's gonna be great to have someone here, so. Now we just need UGA to hurry up and hire them, get, get their process rolling too once we get all this done.
It's a very valuable service, people take things that they have questions, lawn care trees, they do your house.
Yeah, anything, agriculture or natural resources, that usually includes, you know, lawns, erosion issues, things like that, everybody deals with them.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, I would ask that the board approve the, the MOU, Annual Contract and Salary Verification with the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension Agency. I'll make that motion. I'll say it.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? No, all in favor? Five oh. All right, the next is the approval of delegation of authority, Bright from the Start. Mr. Young, would you give us some more information on this request?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. The delegation of authority approval with Bright from the Start is something that's done annually. Bright from the Start is our pre-K program with the state of Georgia, and I am requesting that the board approve this document that will delegate authority granted to the board in the agreement to the district. It's a minor distinction, but legally, our attorney prefers that authority rests with the district instead of the board. I just wanted the board to be aware of that, and so I'm asking for the board to approve our signing of this document reflecting the change from the board to the district as the authority.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the delegation of authority with Bright from the Start as presented?
Some move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Say it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next item is approval of the 2021 Pickett County Code of Conduct. I have been told by Mr. Young that the handbook and code of conduct is the same except for dates and page numbers and things like that.
That is correct, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to Ms. Destiny Shope, who, who has worked on getting our student handbook and code of conduct brushed up for this year, she does a good job with that. And this year, fortunately for Destiny, the only changes were some housekeeping items, where page numbers had to be changed and dates had to be changed. There is no change to the meat of the, of the document, but the board still annually, and several of you have done this several times, the board still annually approves the document. the board still annually approves the document. And so that's what I'm asking you to do this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the 2122 Student Code of Conduct as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. All right. Public participation in board meetings, request for approval. This is policy BCBI. Mr. Young, I believe this is a policy the board voted to place out for public comment last month at our regular board meeting. Have we had any public input on this policy?
We have not, Madam Chair. And so I'm going to ask the board to go ahead and make final approval on policy BCBI. Just as a reminder to everyone that is here and to the board, this was the policy change required by Georgia statute that drops the notification timeline for presenting to the board from five days to 24 hours.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve this change?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, five oh. The next item on the agenda is to request to waive policy BD, which is policy development in reference to policy GARHB and policy IDE3. Mr. Young, will you explain the reason for this request to waive our regular procedure of policy development to immediately approve policy GARHB, which is paid parental leave, and immediately revise and approve policy IDE3, which is competitive interscholastic activities, grades six through 12?
Yes, Madam Chair. Board of Policy BD sets the procedure for policy approvals by the board. And in the usual course of events, I present policy to the board and the board votes to either adopt it, adopt it with modifications, or reject it at the next regular board meeting. However, that policy also provides that we can waive the two-step process when the need arises. In this case, the policies we are presenting concern family medical leave and competitive interscholastic activities, and they are required by state law to be adopted by all school boards prior to July 1. GSBA has been working on policy recommendations for Georgia school districts, and we now have its suggestions for our policies. Therefore, I would like to request a motion and an affirmative vote from the board to waive the requirements of policy BD due to the deadline imposed by these new state requirements.
All right. Do I have a motion to waive the two-meeting limit of policy BD, policy development?
So the delay was on GSBA's part?
No, the governor just signed these two pieces of legislation a couple of weeks ago.
I make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next item is requests for immediate approval of policy GARHB, which is paid parental leave. Would you like to explain that a little bit more to us, Mr. Young?
Yes, Madam Chair. This policy recommendation, which will be labeled policy GARHB, is necessary due to the passage and signing of the new state statute pertaining to eligibility for paid parental leave. We followed the recommendation of GSBA in creating this policy. And as I stated earlier, this is one of the policies I'm asking for the board to waive policy BD to pass without the 30-day tabling, so that we will be compliant with the new state statute becoming effective July 1. This new paid family medical leave statute, which was just passed, is a requirement of the state. It defines what meets the definition of family medical leave and the guidelines for that. And so I'm asking the board to approve policy GARHB, paid parental leave, this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to immediately approve policy GARHB, paid parental leave?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next item is request for immediate revision and approval of policy IDE3, which is competitive interscholastic activities, grades six through 12.
Yes, I'll explain a little bit, Madam Chair. This is our second policy this evening that I'm asking the board to approve a revision of and apply the waiver of policy BD on. This policy revision is also due to new Georgia statute with that July 1 effective date. And so this new statute will require us to modify policy IDE3 on competitive interscholastic activities in grades six through 12. Some of you may have heard of it as the Dexter Mosley Bill. And so we've got to get our policy on interscholastic activities in line with this new piece of legislation. And so I'm asking for board approval for the revision of policy IDE3, competitive interscholastic activities, grades six through 12 this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to revise and immediately approve policy IDE3, competitive interscholastic activities, grades six through 12?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. The next item is approval of the GMP for repairs to plaster ceilings at Tate Elementary. This is what Mr. Gillan was discussing with us earlier. Mr. Young, can you or Mr. Gillan give us information on this project and guaranteed maximum price?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is, as Mr. Gillan said earlier, this is the expense involved in the engineering and the work on the acoustic ceiling tiles, as well as a canopy replacement that was sagging and had some rot in the lighting that goes along with that. And this, of course, is the guaranteed maximum. And we need the board to approve that GMP this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve guaranteed maximum price of $220,373 for the repairs to the ceilings at Tate Elementary School?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I will make clear, Stacy told us this is absolutely a safety issue, repair, not cosmetic.
Absolutely.
This is to keep our people safe and our building sound.
Absolutely. As far as I'm concerned, there's no discussion about this. It has to be done. All in favor? Five oh. The next item is approval of GMP for the agriculture facility at Pickens Junior High School. Mr. Young, would you or Mr. Gillan give us information on these plans and the guaranteed maximum pricing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Mr. Gillan said earlier, this is for the agricultural facility construction at Pickens Junior High, which we are extremely excited about. Expect groundbreaking to begin anytime now. Stacy has done a tremendous job for us in looking at this closely and, as he said earlier, saving us some money on the grading and the road going down to it. The junior high is looking forward to getting this building in place. I am excited. We have quality people working on this project, and it is going to be, it's going to be an impressive thing when it is done. And as with the prior GMP, we just need board approval on that GMP total of $2,348,363. If the board would approve that GMP this evening, that is my request.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price of $2,348,363 for the agriculture facility that will be located at Pickens Junior High School, 1802 Refuge Road, Jasper, Georgia?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Gartrill made the motion and Mr. Green seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to add that this has been needed for some time. I'm glad we're finally able to get underway with it. We've had, you know, instructor busing kids to high school facility, which is overcrowded anyway. And really, this is one of the final steps to making another junior high on ground jewels.
Mm-hmm.
Just finishing off. There's a couple more things maybe we can work on, but this is big.
Yeah, I second that. I'm very excited to finally see this. Can't wait to see the building and Stacy.
I will come back to you with a, we're going to try to move the other greenhouse. I will come back with that later. But where I wanted to put it, now we're going to put the road, so I'm going to have to move it over some. So I've sort of backed off on that until we can get that part. And I'll know more what we can do and give you a little better idea on that. But we are going to get a greenhouse there too.
Oh, that's wonderful. I am excited. And let me just say, I do have the opportunity to talk with Mr. Gillan at times when I'm here in the office. And there are times when he will kind of shyly tell me that I was able to make some changes and we were able to save sometimes as much as $100,000 here or there. And he works very hard to save the county money, but he always does a quality job. And I really do appreciate everything that you do.
I appreciate it. We've got a good team. And Tony met with us, with the design people and all Ag people. And Ag people had a lot of say in this, and they're getting what they want.
Uh-huh.
We're going to give them a good product too.
That's great. And I'm glad. Yeah, and I'm glad they had the input. They should have input.
I agree 100%. They know what we did.
All right. Is there any discussion about the Ag facility? All in favor? Five oh. All right. The next item is request for board approval for out-of-state or overnight field trips for the Pickens High Band, the Pickens Junior High 7th grade, and the Pickens High Junior, Pickens Junior High 8th grade. Mr. Young, do you have some information on these field trips?
I do, Madam Chair. This will be the, and Mr. Hoob is here to field any questions for the high school. It's the 7th grade Jekyll trip, and it is also the 8th grade Savannah trip. These are, some of them are annual recurrences. Some of you have voted for some of these in the past. I've lumped them together so that item O will only require one vote. But Mr. Hoob, do you want to talk to us a little bit about the PHS vans plans? This is exciting stuff.
This is, the board actually voted on this last year. Of course, everything was tabled. We applied and were accepted again. The company actually called me and said, you are applying again, right? And I said, absolutely. The company that booked us also helped us with the Chicago and the Philadelphia trip. They really enjoyed the van. We hope that this is going to work, excuse me, work for us. The trip cost itself, because let's get right down to it, the trip cost itself is approximately $600 per student. And we will have fundraising opportunities available for them to defray the cost of the trip. The trip not only includes the performance in the parade, it involves pretty much every DC, as it says, every DC thing that we can get to, including the new, the new Air and Space Museum instead of the old one. The old one's awesome, if you grew up in the 60s. But this new one has the Discovery Space Shuttle and everything else, so we're really excited about that. But everything, I've got all the individual work on this. If anybody would like to see that, then the itineraries are all available. Busting companies have already been booked, pending, of course, the approval of this. But it's an exciting trip. We really hope to get a lot of students that are able to come. We're marching about 92 this year. And I'm honestly hoping for about 60 or 72 commit. And hopefully that'll be good enough for the company that has booked us for this. Because they want a minimum marching, but this is also post-COVID. And I think they're going to be happy with especially with any band to come. But this parade is not something that is offered a lot to many groups. It used to be where only one group per state was accepted. And I think they've taken two Georgia groups this year and we're one of them. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I think it says a lot that you were chosen pre-COVID.
Yes, we're very excited about that. This one's been on my agenda for many years. And it was, it's just the right time with Chicago and Philly, and we did Gatlinburg a couple of years ago. So it was the right time and the right, it's such a fun trip. The kids think, oh, it's DC, but then they get there like, oh my gosh, I see this on TV all the time. So they love it. It's a really fun trip.
Thank you, Mr. Hoob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
You always field some tremendous product. Dr. Flatt, if you could please, does anyone have any questions of Dr. Flatt about the Jekyll or the Savannah trips? These are recurring, I believe, but.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Flatt can answer any of your questions.
Obviously, we didn't do these last year because of COVID. But these are the same trips that we've been doing in the past. The 7th grade one is to Jekyll Island, to the 4-H camp that is down there. It is, I've not been on that one, but the APs have been. They, I think I'm due up on that one. I go this time, the 7th grade one. But it is a lot of fun for the kids. It is a lot of exploring on the beaches and the marsh areas. They do a ton of different stuff, science-based, and a lot of things trying to work on ecology and some different things they're doing there. So it's a really, really good trip. Yet of all the trips, it's more cost-friendly than some of the other ones, so it's a, it's a good thing for them to go to. The 8th grade trip is one to Savannah, a little bit more culturally out there. They go to a lot of different places. I've been on the April trip. Fantastic. A lot of the different things that kids get to go and do and explore while they're there. Ties in really well what they do in Georgia history and ties in with James Edward Oglethorpe. About 10,000 times they hear about and talk about while they're there. So they're really good trips. Our, the only piece of information we're waiting on for the Savannah trip is what the cost is going to be. We're a little hesitant to see right now because we were told it will go up this year due to the rise. So, but we've got some plans on how to defray costs through fundraising and the support of our Pickens Youth enrichment program, which helps us a lot with things like that. So hopefully y'all are good to go with that. We'll head back out on those again this year. Got any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Flatt. So, Madam Chair, I'm asking for the board to approve these three out-of-state and overnight field trips.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve these three requests for out-of-state and overnight field trips?
So moved. Second.
Do you need a board chaperone on any of them?
You're welcome.
You have to ride the bus.
Tony, you take my spot on that.
I'd like to fly instead of the bus.
I bet they, yeah. They have to do some special accommodations.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Green and a second from Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Five oh. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 13, 2021 call meeting at 5:00 and the May 13, 2021 regular meeting at 6:00 PM?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Approval of surplus. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted by Tate Elementary, Harmony Elementary, Hill City Elementary, Jasper Middle School, and Pickens High School? I believe these requests include outdated and damaged library books and damaged technology equipment. Do I hear a motion?
I give the motion.
Okay. Mr. Holland?
I'll second.
And Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Any board comments? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I would say that's unanimous. All right. Who wants to go on record? I'll put Aaron down. Second? Tommy, any further discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We are adjourned at 6:51 PM.